Calling in North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority and regular town council meeting to water for Tuesday, February 5th, 2019 at 7:05 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Candelora.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Fawnen.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Vick Leon.
Here.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Here.
Motion to approve the January 22nd, 2019 town council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Vick Leon.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
We'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, Correspondent's Citizen's Statements, there's nothing. Unfinished business, there's nothing. New business, Water Pollution Control Authority Application to Connect Proposed Commercial Building on Property Known as 28 Branford Road, Map 2, Lot 4, to Sanitary Sewers.
Good evening, everybody. The application before you, or the request before you is to connect property, a proposed office development at property at 28 Branford Road into the sanitary sewers. On 28 Branford Road is a slightly under five acre parcel located on Branford Road, close to Branford Town Line, pretty much across the street from the Rose Winery Building that's under construction. Currently, there's a single-family house on it with some outbuildings that are proposed to be removed during the construction process. Again, the proposal is to construct two interconnected medical office buildings on the property consisting of slightly under forty-five thousand square feet of office space. What they would need to do is, there's an existing lateral to the property, they would actually have to construct a new lateral, a little bit down gradient closer to the Branford Line because of the elevations of their proposed building. The other, the existing lateral that was left on the property was set to serve the existing building on the property which is at a higher elevation. So, it's an easy connection, they could tie into an existing manhole that, a little further down on Route 139. So, that's pretty much, from a WPCA point of view, the actual construction part of it. The other big item is they're required to pay a special connection fee based upon the square footage and the use of the proposed building. They have, again, slightly under forty-five thousand square feet of office building. That pays a connection fee of one unit for every one thousand square foot of office space, which equates to forty-five units. They've already been assessed one unit, so there's remaining forty-four connection units that they would be required to pay for the property. The rate is four thousand dollars per unit for the first five units and two thousand dollars per unit thereafter. So, the total connection fee for the proposed development is ninety-eight thousand dollars based upon our regulations. That's, again, it's pretty straightforward from that point of view. There is a suggested motion in the agenda packet. I could answer any questions, but before we go too far, I'd like to maybe just have Mike Ott, he's a design engineer from Summer Hill Civil Engineers, he's got a rendering of the building, give you an idea what it all looks like. It's a pretty nice looking facility and I'd like to take the opportunity to present it to you. If I can do that right now.
Yes.
Can I get Mike Ott from Summer Hill?
Good evening. Good evening. I think Kurt has, sorry, I think Kurt has given you a good overview of the project and we, like Kurt said, we'd like to, wanted to show you renderings of the proposed office buildings. So, it's a, the plan is to redevelop the site as a medical, professional medical office park. And as Kurt said, there'll be two buildings that are about twenty-two thousand or so square feet in to, each building, two floors interconnected by a second floor bridge. Not sure if you can see that very well in the renderings, but the proposal is to interconnect the two.
One in back of the other one?
Say again.
One, one building in back of the other building?
No, they're actually, that's probably, it's probably because of the perspective you're, yeah, it's the perspective you're working in. This, this elevation would be parallel to Route 139 to Branford Bridge. So, when you drive, when you come from School Ground Road or Valley Road, you would, you climb up the hill and on your left you would pass that long elevation of both buildings. You'd actually see the bridge, the second floor bridge between the two.
So, the front of the building would actually face, it must be like an interior driveway that gets into the, right, it's not on that curve, the entrance into the parking lot?
It's up at the, if you're coming from Route 80, if you're heading south towards School Ground.
Yeah.
There is the, there's a gravel driveway that's actually the other end of Enterprise Drive, I believe, the Loop Road. Right past that is the driveway to the current home and that's where the new driveway will be.
Okay.
Essentially right where the current driveway for the house is.
Okay.
If you, if you're familiar with the site.
Okay.
Yeah. So, when you come from, when you come from Route 80 heading south, you will see this elevation, that's where you'll look at as you approach. And as you, as you pass, you'll see this long elevation of both buildings and the interconnected bridge.
So, this is the last house, the house just before you, the downgrade, the Valley Road?
Yes.
Is that the last house or whatever?
It's like a gray.
It's a large color.
Yeah.
Right, it's right across from, from the Rose, Rose's.
The Orchard.
Orchard.
Yeah, that's that wood, that old wood in there.
So, that rock ledge is coming out of there.
That's rough.
Yes, there'll be, there'll be a lot of, there'll be blasting and earth removal to get the site to the great grades and sight lines initially, as you know, will be improving sight distance around that curve, you know, as you head down toward School Ground.
Yeah.
We just wanted to give you, you know, thank you for considering our sewer connection request and just love and like to see, you know, brief overview of your proposal as Kurt says.
I got a question that you may or may not know and it could just be, there must be some reason, why the bridge on the second floor?
Um, I think, you know, the architect came up with that idea and I, if I understood it, understand him right, it will allow doctors who want more space to easily, the same practice or affiliated practices maybe, to just be connected by that, by that bridge. Yeah, and I actually, I actually think it's kind of nice. But he, the architect actually, we had two separate buildings to begin with and the architect came up with a bridge. There'll be a walkway underneath it.
So, the only other comment I'll have is, you know, as a, as a family, we've, you know, seen this and, you know, we've got five acres of industrial land across the street from, from here that was actually part of the farm. The guy that had it married a rose girl like a hundred years ago.
Oh.
And then he developed all that, so, so we're actually very happy with what's proposed here, with what could go on on a five acre industrial site.
Industrial zone site, yeah.
Would this, I just have one quick question, would this cause or possibly have another traffic light there or it wouldn't call for it?
No.
Because I know there's one further down.
Right, at school, at School Ground, right.
Right.
No, it wouldn't warrant a signal, we have a traffic engineer that's assisting us and he'll help us in the planning and zoning, you know, process which starts Thursday night actually.
Yeah.
But no, there, it won't warrant, it will not warrant a signal.
And then that curve that's there, that's going to remain, like, it can't really straighten that out?
Right, that'll, that'll stay, but the, like I was saying earlier, the, the sight distance, when you pull out of that driveway, when you, when you come out of the, or the current home driveway and the new proposed driveway, when you look left towards Route 80, northbound, you can see for a mile. But when you look right, that rock, it's, the road curves.
That's why I asked about that ledge, because that ledge comes out.
So, that, that's got to come out, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a lot better, right.
That should, we've had a DOT out there.
The state should have fixed that.
Yeah.
When the state redid the corner.
They did.
I mean, believe me, they were like, they stopped twenty feet short. It's actually worse than it was before they fixed it. You see the, you see the bicycle lane there between the white lane and that ledge?
Yeah.
It's this far.
Yeah. So, yeah, this project should make that situation a lot, a lot better.
Has this impacted two small houses on the other side just before the service station?
It, 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 it won't, other than, you know, the normal construction impact, noise.
I didn't know if that was part of that property.
No, no, not at all, totally, totally separate. But there, we're gonna, we're gonna reach out to them because, actually Kurt suggested we, you know, we reach out to them because they're, clearly they're going to be impacted by the typical construction process, you know, noise and the work that's got to go on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, good luck.
Thanks. Okay. I'd like to make a motion, I move the motion as presented on page seventeen of our packet. It's a long one, so I'm not going to read the whole thing as long as there's, you know, corrections. Basically, it outlines all of the conditions of connecting to the sewer and the cost to it and there are no special provisions in this. I'll second that.
Kurt, just one quick question, just to make sure I'm math is correct. You said you credited them for one unit, so we credited them two thousand dollars, but you said the first five units are four thousand dollars. Right. So, did we do that correctly? Yeah. Okay? I took off the two thousand dollars, I didn't think of, I took off two thousand dollars for the one unit, because it would have been a hundred thousand. Correct. And I took off. If there's one unit there, the first four or five units are supposed to be four thousand dollars. Right. Should the credit be four thousand? Well, I took, I took it as two thousand, that's what I did. I'm not arguing viciously, I just want to make sure we didn't make a math error. Yeah, but that's what I, that's what I did, I took off the last unit, because I betted a two thousand dollar wager. Anybody else? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Vick Leon.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
We'll move on to citizen's statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control Authority. Move into the regular town council meeting, reports of committees, boards and commissions, Economic Development Commission.
The Economic Development Commission met last night and there's also a report from Roger Salway in your packet. Last night, they had representatives from the Economic Resource Center, CERC, and to present their findings on a self-assessment survey for the town. I was only able to stay for the first hour of the meeting before the next meeting. They continued on and I'm hoping to get the full results of that survey to pass to the council as well to share with you, but I think it's a, it's an interesting exercise that they went through and I think yields a lot of information for the Economic Development Commission that's going through it, reviewing it and be able to put that in, well, the suggestions and the data that they're able to discuss and put into practice, so to speak. So, good meeting for them last night.
Thank you. Park and Rec.
Park and Rec met last week, they discussed for the Poco Fest, the beer and wine garden, they are going to continue with that again this year, they are going to come before us to get the blessing of the council, to propose to the council again to approve so that they can apply for a special permit to serve beer and wine. And they are also going to move the beer and wine tent from the lower field where it was up onto the fairground so that it's closer and they have more visibility from everyone attending. So, they're going to work out those details and they are working on their budget to present, they're looking at, looking at their fees for, that they assess when you pull a permit for any of the, either inside the community center or any of the fields, they will probably be adjusting those and they also elected officers.
Police Commissioner?
The Police Commission met with three of the town council members on all day Saturday, interviewing the police chief, that was kind of our first round. The next meeting of the Police Commission is Monday, February 11th and part of that meeting will continue in terms of the interviews and discussion.
Thank you. Fire Commission?
Fire Commission, the next meeting is Thursday, there was no, no meeting before that.
Board of Education, Town Communication, Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
Our next meeting is on February 19th at six o'clock.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
George, were you there?
No, I wasn't.
I was, but I don't, I don't remember what they did. So, they meet this Thursday night, so it couldn't have been anything too important.
Issuer Health District Department?
Permanent Project Building Committee?
They met last night and there, well, Mayor, you were there, Council Rose was there. Short meeting, productive I think and to an extent of discussion of some of the issues with two-story versus one-story and ultimately the commission, or at least I think, members that are interested will try to arrange a visit to another police station to view a newly built or newly developed police station. But there is an issue with seating of Council Rose as a voting member that was challenged by the chairman, Steve Whalen. So, I've talked to Attorney Moreno and I think it's going to take a little more work to review. Mr. Whalen, Chairman Whalen had presented the ordinance and the procedures of the Permanent Project Building Committee and suggests that there can only be two from a user group and that, I think his take was that a council member would be a liaison and not voting member. So, I think we have a conflict there that this council could amend the agenda to take up to discuss if they want to tonight.
Well, what are our, what are alternatives or are you working on that yet?
Well, I mean, you have, from an alternative standpoint, you could, this is a permanent building committee and you're kind of in a concept stage, so you can form a subcommittee of the town council for the purposes of this activity and it can get, to the extent that the permanent building committee was going to remain as originally designed through the ordinance, it could be referred to them at the appropriate point and that's when you actually have a project that you're advancing during the building phase as an oversight of that.
In the conceptual stage, it could stay with the?
It could stay with the council and you can just form an ad hoc committee for purposes of this development process rather than wrestle with the concept of the ordinance and, because I don't think you, to the extent you want to address the ordinance because it's problematic for other reasons and puts limitations or you just don't like it, you can address that separately, but, you know, it seems like for what it's intended, you're not, this project is not there yet for the function that this committee was formed for. So, you know, my recommendation is to avoid the conflict, is simply have an ad hoc subcommittee that you can appoint, you can make it as large as you want or as small as you want, there's no statutory requirement that you have on it all, so you can make it in any form that you want, it's totally up to you. Yeah, because there, there's other issues, you know, the, there's that whole design phase that shouldn't even go to a project, apartment project building, you know, and, you know, the whole piece of land down there to figure out where the pieces are going. Right. So, yeah. Because this, an ad hoc committee would certainly seem the best answer. Right, because again, as I've been listening to you over the last few meetings, it's, where is it going to be seated, is this part of a larger conceptual plan, you know, so you're really in a design kind of phase of a lot of issues rather than just one building. And so, I don't think it's, you, you want to refer to them at this moment. So, my, my recommendation is you just create an ad hoc subcommittee.
Thank you. Town Managers Report, update on plan of Conservation and Development?
Yes, I wanted to keep you apprised of the progress that the Steering Committee is making and there's a memo from Kerry Duquesne, the Town Planner, on that, that the workshop was held on the 29th and about thirty people in attendance and that, that information should be making its way to, to Kerry and will get posted on the North Branford POCD 2019 website, so it's a, it's a work in progress and, and it was nice to see with the forecast that, that we had a pretty good, decent turnout for that event. So, that's ongoing and we'll continue to report on that.
Thank you. Progress Report regarding Design of Town Center Concept?
Yeah, that also, in addition to the brief memo that I have in the packet, I also put at your desk a document from Silver Petricelli that came in today as a, it's basically a summary of that meeting to help guide you what we're looking at and it might be helpful that more eyes or nine members here of this town council take a look at it as well because this is part of their gathering information from us. Particular importance is if whether or not the council thought, you know, issue like number three, we're estimating twenty, thirty percent larger facility for the town hall and the community center at twenty percent, so, you know, if, if, if members of the council felt that's just, you know, way out of whack, you know, too, too high, too low, now would be the time as we go through this process so we're not making Petricelli, the architects, go back and forth and with respect to designs and, you know, footprints is basically what they're, and they're not designing full buildings, they're just trying to get a sense of size and footprint and then to try and orient that. So, there's a lot more comments, I just, I just reference that as one of the more important points, but there are plenty of other factors to consider and I certainly welcome the council's input as, as we go through this process.
Well, at least one other factor to consider, we discussed briefly last, last meeting, is the possibility of regionalization affecting our, our schools. And fact of the matter is that if that has any reality down the road, we're going to be left with a very, very large building, possibly, which will serve no purpose and if we're going to possibly move town hall or, or anything else somewhere, that may very well be a logical place. So, I don't, I don't know really what makes sense, but having another empty building and certainly a building of that size and that space to build, to build something new over, over on Forest Road, I'm not quite sure that that's the right thing to do, so maybe we're a little premature in pushing forward or maybe we need greater clarity from our state representative and state senator on whether this reality of the school consolidation and regionalization is going, going to affect us. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of factors that are pointing out on that.
I think there's a lot of opposition, I think it'll take a long time, I think maybe.
It's years and years and years.
Well, piggybacking on what you're saying, George, you know, right now, Stanley T. you have the Board of Ed sharing space with Park Rec and the Senior Center. Maybe we should look at, you know, the Board of Ed moving, you know, if we're looking at the high school, moving the BOE, you know, into that facility and having Stanley T. being used for Park Rec and Senior entirely. I mean, I don't know if that warrants earth, but, you know, that may, you know, be an option.
The, the whole idea is to do it as efficiently and, and completely as we can, but if we end up being, you know, having a, a large building empty with very little purpose attached to it.
By doing that, you're, you know, you're not putting up a building and, or maximize the use, I'm sure, you know more than I do with the Senior Center, how much room they need and then possibly, you know.
Thank you for pointing that out, by the way.
All of all the respect. And then, you know, Park Rec, I know space is always an issue with, you know, storage and, and whatnot, so, just a thought.
Is there anyone that can come in here, Michael, and talk to us about regionalization and what's going on with it? Do we have any?
I think it's too early. I think it's way too early.
It's just thrown out there.
Yeah.
There's not even, there's not even a bill out there, I don't think yet, there's nothing.
And I think it might be in case of administrators, like combining like curriculum coordinator, like one curriculum coordinator for two, that's the way they're going to go, I think, at the beginning, because there's so much opposition.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see how they could say, you know, okay, Branford and North Branford are going to be one school district and close all the North Branford schools and you have to move to Branford, well, the, the infra, they don't have the infrastructure, so why would it, it, it doesn't make sense that a town would have to close all of their schools and move to a town that doesn't have the infrastructure, they want, it would take years to build enough of the infrastructure and then what are you going to do with the buildings in the school that they say are closed?
Yeah, there's a lot more.
So, I think there's just so much out there that's not answered and they don't know where it's going yet, that it's probably premature to have someone come in and talk about it because the thing could change or get dropped. I, I agree with Marie, I think it's going to be more, if there's regionalization, it's more on the administrative side.
That's what I keep hearing more.
Well, I mean, even financially, you know, how do you, you know, with the tax, you know, paying, you know, like we're doing with cost growth, I mean, how do we figure out what you're going to be paying, what it would do to our tax?
There's so many, there's so many different twists and turns that are going to be there. I, I agree that it's a, it's a ways out, but, you know, because I, you know, spend, you know, two week, two weekends a year at my place in Vermont, I watched it happen up there and it only took five years and what they landed on was the little communities could keep their elementary school. And then they just said, we're pulling the state funding if you don't get on board. And there was lawsuits and everything else and in five years, it's regionalized. And to the point of the infrastructure, you know, I, I disagree with that, that they'd have to build buildings because, you know, in North Branford, we were close to four thousand students when me and Mike went through. And in Branford, I'm, you know, they were always bigger than us, but right now, we have sixteen hundred students and I'm throwing out round numbers and Branford has twenty-five hundred students. So, if you did combine them, we would have the school district that we went to in North Branford. And the, the problem is we're running out of kids. And I, and I do agree, I think administratively, they may be looking at it because, that's the thing, it's like, how many administrators do you need per student? But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's a long ways off and not going to happen, just, just because what I saw happen in other states and, and, you know, does a four thousand student school system offer more to the kids than a sixteen hundred student system? And the answer by all educators is yes. So, it's not, it's not like. And I, and I do agree, I think administratively, they may be looking at it because that's the thing. It's like, how many administrators do you need per student? But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's a long ways off and not gonna happen. Just, just because what I saw happen in other states. And, and, you know, does a four thousand student school system offer more to the kids than a sixteen hundred student system? And the answer by all educators is yes. So it's not, it's not like something that, you know, isn't gonna be discussed and isn't gonna keep coming back if they have some reason they think it's gonna save a lot of money.
Well, it's not impossible to do.
But it's not gonna be quick, I agree with that.
They have regionals in, in our state now. And there's regional sports teams that are developing every day.
Right.
You know, so I mean, regional is there, so, but it's just-
What level?
Yeah. What, what are the parents gonna settle for or agree with and, you know, what school districts are gonna be combined, you know?
Right.
And so there's a lot of factors.
And I don't know how they, like, pull, pulled that out. If you, if you really were gonna be logical, you would more divide the town and Northwood would go to North Haven. I mean, that's a long ride from the Durham line to Branford.
Right, I mean, I think they just took the example of when they did probate judge, when they combined for probate judge. As an example, I, you know, that was just to get an idea of what it might look like.
I know, you know, and I guess someone that could speak to it would be Benny, your brother. But, you know, he says it's too early and, and actually this year it's dead on arrival. He, you know, that's what he'll tell you when you talk to him. So it's a ways out, but I would hate to build a new high school and then have us, have them five years and we owe money for thirty years and we got a brand new school that's empty. So we gotta be real careful on, like you started this conversation, George. We gotta be careful on what we do and build.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're not, we're not living with, with, you know, impermeable borders. These, these things are gonna affect us and, and what we do. And, you know, your point, I think, was, was very well taken, Al, not so long ago when we were talking about possibilities for the police department. And you said, well, if we hadn't torn down the fifteen ninety-nine, that would have been a, a place to relocate some of the police services and then, you know, maybe renovate in place. Would, would have been a viable option for, for, to at least consider. So, you know.
We made a crystal ball.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that would be nice. I blew an eye.
Okay, getting back to your point, how did they handle the financial end of it? Like, do they charge per student or?
The state got them to do it by saying, any town that doesn't sign on just loses all state funding. And believe me, I get it that Vermont is a lot more rural with a lot less kids than we are. But there were just, you know, the newspapers were full of letters to the editor and towns and towns that got sued by the state or sued the state not to go and lost and had to go. So it's, you know, pretty much a dumb deal up there. And it only took five years from when they, when the governor came in and threw this out there. But I'd love to see what the savings is. You know, how does that save money in the state?
Right.
Well, the savings are going to be astronomical when they're on paper. When the proposal's written up, they're, they're going to be, you know, enormous.
Okay. Valid point, George.
And next item, community events and presentations. Next item, citizen statements, petitions, correspondence, correspondence from Tom Coell, building inspector regarding demolition of a historic structure.
Yeah, Tom's letter memo was in, in the packet and I also just included the appraisal card and picture. Asked Tom, I, I don't think there's anything historically significant to the house other than its age. So I'm not sure what action, if anything, the, the council needs to take. I don't believe it's just more of a notification about this application. Unless, of course, someone else has, has something contrary to that with respect to the his, history of that structure. I, I do not.
So is this something that has to go to the state or is there like a ninety day? Just because of its age, is that what this is about?
Yeah, it gives, it gives people an opportunity to respond. In fact, this, this council could, could do that, I guess, and get intervener status or something of that nature. But, yeah, it gives a, a public notice.
But does that go to historical society or do you have to get permission from?
I don't, I don't think so. I'll check with Tom.
They get notified, but it's more of a notice, a booking on notice and they want to read or try to do something to save you.
But if you look at it, if you look at it from the street, it doesn't look any historical value at all to it. You know, it looks like a regular house.
I was just curious whether there was a process you had to go through for a historic.
So it's not on any historical registry or anything, it's just old?
Yeah.
Next, resignations and appointments, nothing listed. Unfinished business, discussion, action, future budget plan and initiative for fire pension, regarding fire pension.
Yeah, I was, I was asked to, to go through, to contact Becky Seelman and go through the options. I think we didn't get that far into the, to the discussion. So it was raised by Council Rose and I reached out to ask Becky for just some options if the council wanted to do something with that or wait till it goes to the pension committee and comes back. But I think the council should know that there, there were three questions that I posed to her. One on whether or not you could put a cap or freeze the multiplier. And she said, yes, of course, you could, you could do that. Whether or not you could choose to change the formula and, and present a flat fixed number like we saw in other communities have, you know, five hundred dollar cap per month. You could do that. And you could also go so far as to change the, the defined benefit to a defined contribution. And obviously some, those first two are, I think, a little easier than, than the third one. But they're all options that are available should the council want to do anything with respect to that plan. She did caution, caveat, that check with legal counsel because this isn't your traditional, you know, plan. These aren't employees. This is, as she mentioned, a service award plan. So with respect to, you know, IRS and other legal ramifications, we want to check that through before council would embark on making any of those changes. But it would come through the form of just plan, plan amendments to reflect the changes if the council wanted to do that. And I think my recommendation would be that, that it plays out through the pension committee and wait for, wait for that to, to come back to the council.
Mike, is the pent, pension committee provided, you know, in our last packet, I believe there was maybe five other towns that, and, you know, we were provided all the information as far as how their whole pension was set up. Does North Branford, do we have something like that, you know, showing?
Oh, the whole plan document?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that's available to, to get that.
So on this, you know, like, so, so, you know, it all, it all came before us and then we looked into it and we saw what it is. And, and it's a, a very rich pension. And so if you look at it, and that was one of the things I had Michael ask, and I talked to a lot of the volunteers. And if, I, I think, Michael, you asked her about if you could pay cash each year?
Yeah, well, you could, you could, you could opt one of the other, you're right. An option stipend, if you wanted to do a stipend.
So if you looked at it, and I'm gonna do simple math, Anthony, so don't correct me. So if you look at it, the town's spending two hundred and seventy thousand a year on the fire department pension right now. And there's about ninety volunteers who qualify or have been, probably average, maybe a little less, maybe a little more. So there's ninety of them. So that means we're spending three thousand dollars a year per guy that meets the requirements. So to kick it down the road, back to the pension committee, would you look at it and would we want to offer? And we all know that when you're young and have small children or a new mortgage or something, you might, even though it's not good financial planning, you might have a much better use for the three thousand dollars this year and next year and the next year. And so have an option that you could opt out of the pension, but you could get that three thousand dollars a year. Because in my mind, we're not gonna go backwards on the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year that we're spending. And I don't believe that there's ever gonna be a year that we're not spending two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. I, I'm not buying that, you know, fifteen years from now it costs zero. So I think that if we're committed to the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year and there's that many members and they got a three thousand dollar option, you know, did the pension committee meet with the firemen and see, you know, do, do you want us to pursue this? You know, are there enough of you that would like the three thousand dollars? And like, and I didn't understand, and that's why I had Michael ask. I'm like, well, if we're taking three thousand out, what's that do to the pension? But once that person, I guess it's a wash if they opt, if they're not in the pension. So you can take that three thousand and, and not worry about it, I guess. But, I mean, she'd have to explain that. But she, because that's what I'm like, okay, are we gonna deplete the pension if we aren't funding it fully? But that's not the answer that-
Well, what happened in ninety-nine, it's a similar situation. When the town had the defined benefit plan that we closed and meant to a defined contribution plan, the actuaries came in and evaluated what everybody's accrued liability was as of that day. And said, okay, we can, you can stay in that plan if you want to or we'll give you that amount of dollars to start off in a four oh one plan. So the same thing would apply here. They, the actuary would come in and compute everybody's liability, what they've earned as of that point, this point in time. Say you pick one, one night, whatever you pick, July first. And then the individual, if they chose to, would take that pot of money out of the pension plan and start their own individual four oh one style pension over here. That's something that happened in ninety-nine. So it's definitely doable, if that's where you wanna go.
Anthony, what, yeah, can I?
No, I'm done. I just, because I'm thinking the pension too many should do it.
A young person living at their parents' home, that's a volunteer fireman.
Yes.
And he knows in five years he's gonna be moving out to a house in Killingworth or Madison or North Haven and he's not gonna be a member any longer. What happens to his pension?
If he goes out before ten years, he has no vested benefit. If he stays at least ten years, he has a vested benefit that he can pick up at when he turns sixty-five.
So it behooves somebody younger that doesn't plan on staying around here to take the cash versus trying to-
Do some financial planning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plan on sticking around for ten years until he's vested.
Sure, sure. I mean, there, there's all different scenarios. I mean, there are some kids that we have that are young that are in the four oh one. They, they see the benefit of, I'm starting at eighteen and I could have a decent, you know, pot of money if I, you know, do it properly. So there's, there's both schools of thought.
But they gotta commit to, to stay in ten years.
Yeah. There's no right or wrong answer. Everybody's got individual circumstances, as Al mentioned. Some people may want the cash today to do something with.
That turns it into a, an annual salary, in a sense. If it's starting at day, at year one, as opposed to a pension, which you don't get until you reach, you know, vesting. If you're, if you're in year three, year five, and you're being paid, you're being paid. I'm not, I'm not sure what's going on there with that.
That's why I think we should send it to the pension committee. You can thank me later, Joe.
The problem I've got with, with that suggestion, Al, is I'm not sure the pension committee is equipped to really deal with this. We review pension requests and we make a decision on whether or not the person is entitled to a pension and vote to approve it. The actuary concludes the benefit the person's going to get. Really what you're suggesting is that we refashion the entire pension plan vis a vis the fire department. A, I don't think there are, there's anybody on that committee that's qualified to really do that. B, it really is a personnel issue that you're asking the pension committee to take up that's probably vested in the town council. Most pension committee can do is make a recommendation. And the question that's been presented to the pension committee, what brought the whole issue here, was there was a multiplier of an additional fifty-five cents per year for the last four years, Anthony?
Correct.
That now has expired. Our last approval four years ago ran out. And the fire department was asking to increase that contribution to one dollar. That's really a very narrow question that was presented to the pension committee. As I thought about it, I frankly thought that that probably was not even an appropriate question for the pension committee. That also, I felt, was a personnel question. However, historically, the pension committee has made a recommendation when there's been a request for a change in the multiplier. So from that perspective, I was certainly willing to entertain motions and discussion on that narrow question. But to refashion the pension plan in the manner you're suggesting, I think is really way outside of the scope of what the pension committee should be doing. That's just-
So you're thinking we should do it?
It really is a town council issue. I mean, that, that's pretty much why, as long as I've been on the pension committee, I've always insisted questions of this nature, even if they're considered by the committee, be nothing more than a recommendation that the town council has to accept or reject. We're the fiscal body, we the town council. And we're also pretty much, through the town manager, in charge of personnel for the town. So I think it really is our bailiwick.
Following up what you just said, Joe, if I, if I understood that right, you said that it was a, an approval for a fifty-five cent multiplier for four years?
Increase in multiplier.
Right, increase in multiplier for four years.
Correct.
Which then expired.
It is now expired. I guess this is later.
So, so basically, it's, there's no increase on the multiplier?
The multiplier would just stay where it's at.
Would just stay where it is?
Correct.
Okay. So that's what the, that's really what the question is, if I'm understanding.
Well, the fire commission, I guess, voted at one of their meetings to in, to increase the multiplier to a dollar a year.
To request.
To request. So that's the request that came before the pension committee.
So the request is essentially to renew the multiplier?
To renew it and to increase it.
To renew it and to increase it to virtually double.
Correct.
Okay.
Just the increased, I mean, I've doubled the multiplier.
I understood.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Ross, I think to make that decision, it would be helpful to have, you know, that, the document and to see the whole package. You know, there, I don't know, you know, what other stipends or, you know, what else is in there. You know, as far as, you know, reading the other towns, they had all different offerings. You know, it was ten years, fifteen years, the way they did the points, if you will. So I think, you know, we probably need that whole package, you know, to see everything and it'll help make that decision.
Well, see, I think too, I think when we first did it, we went to the thirty-five years because multiplier was low. And so for the guys that were going out right then and there, if you didn't go to the thirty-five years, they really didn't get much. But now, as everything's gone up, you're seeing that, you know, it's a pretty healthy, pretty healthy pension. You know, al- almost double what any town we could find on like a monthly payout. So, you know.
Well, it's getting to the stage where it should be negotiated, somebody, whether Mike negotiates, you know, some, some form of it. Because, you know, the thirty-five years was the highest in any town I've, I've seen.
Right, the next was twenty.
So maybe it's, maybe it's time to bring it down, you know, bring the multiplier down. Bring the years down and, you know, then, then look at the multiplier.
Yeah, just for clarification, the cap was removed in two thousand fifteen in our town. There's no cap on, on years of service.
So you could have forty years of service?
You could have a guy who starts at eighteen and go to seventy.
That's where, that has to be negotiated.
Right.
Why, why, why would you lose a guy who's got valuable service to you? He wants to come out and do his job still. He's saving you the, the ability of going to the career department. He's saving you the, the ability of going to the career department.
Isn't this for active firefighters?
Right, so as long as you pass your annual physical, seventy is the mandatory retirement age, correct? So if you, if you have a guy who starts at eighteen, passes his physical and comes out in the middle of the night to do your calls, why are you going to say, well, we don't want you to go past thirty years of service?
Because.
Why, why, why do your cops do twenty-five and out? They don't get any more pension credit. So same thing would apply here. A guy, a guy that is forty-five years old would say, I'm done? With all the knowledge he has and all the training given, vested in that fireman? They're going to say, come to the curb because he's got, you know, twenty-five years in?
No, but Anthony, forty years plus is an awful lot.
Unless you put, unless you put a freeze on the cap.
You have to put a dollar cap like the town.
That's your trade-off, because you, you don't want to lose your, your membership.
Right.
But you don't, you know, you don't want to have that increased liability. But I think that, you know, there's a lot of different options and.
That's where, that's where I think it requires some negotiations.
Well, I think this, this is the, and this is the body, this is, this is it.
Unless we have a special meeting and we, we sit down and decide where we go.
Yeah, you could do that.
Well, we'd also have to look at the impact financially. You know, we're going to have the same number of firefighters, some in, some out, some in, some out, that's randomly changing, potentially. So we would have to look at what, what the financial impact there was and what is best for the, for the town as a whole. It might surprise us.
I think, I think you, you people here are losing the, the sight of what, what's going on. These guys are doing this for nothing. Compared to a paid department, if we had a paid department, we wouldn't be talking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'd be talking an awful lot more money. These guys come out there and they give their time, they do this for nothing, they're putting their life in danger, they're leaving their families. I don't think it's something that, uh.
Well, I don't think anybody's questioning that, but I don't think.
Nobody's questioning the dedication, they're questioning the money. They're questioning the money.
Yeah, you're talking about their pensions.
You're not questioning the dedication, you're talking about the money. What, what can the town afford?
You're looking, you're looking at building a new town hall for how much down the, down the road and you're worried about these guys, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year?
No, I think we're, we're just looking at the whole package and to see what's best for them and for the town.
I got a couple seniors you could talk to that are losing their house, so if you want to talk to them, I'll give them your phone number.
That's fine, you know what? These guys said, we're not going, we're not going to any more calls, here's your fire trucks and that's it, we're leaving.
Nobody's taking anything away from their question.
They didn't say anything, you take anything to their phone.
Moving on, personnel rules, regulations and merit system.
That is not ready yet, so I'll, something needs some more time with Courtney on that.
Okay, update on nine forty-four Toto Road remediation?
Yeah, I don't think there's.
I'm going to report your sole, sole filing, uh, survey to ask you about weather related.
Yeah, they got a portion of it done, but.
That's correct.
The, the weather.
So we're, we're, she didn't cut down the survey at this point in time, we'll put it down on.
Okay, moving to new business discussion action, discussion on collective bargaining agreement between Board of Education and administrators.
I, I did some checking just now with the board chair and the other members of the board, I mean, in terms of the negotiation. It was approximately a one point five percent increase in salary each year. Well, approximately one point five percent each year increase in salary. I just, Shawna and Marcy.
For administrators?
For the administrators, so it's not, it's not clear in here. Supposedly there's a synopsis sheet, but nobody seems to have that sheet.
This is not the synopsis.
How many?
No.
No.
There's a synopsis of a whole, um, package, but somehow nobody seems to have.
Right.
How many administrators were there, I forget?
I think they have eight.
Eight, right, eight or ten.
And, and the back.
It's on the back, it's on the back.
The appendix A, page fifteen of the contract.
So the one point five represents the, the net, uh, considering all of the variables of, of premium, insurance premiums, salary, annuities and the like.
The premium is well below the average, according to what I've rece, the information I received. It's about one percent per year under the premium for the insurance.
So the, the way it works, just for the new members on the council, is, uh, so the council gets administrators contracts and teacher contracts once they get negotiated at the Board of Ed level. We have thirty days to take action. If we take no action on it, it just automatically passes, I mean, it just goes into effect. So this was filed with the town clerk on January eighth, so the thirty days is up within a few days of our meeting now. So we don't have to do anything if we, if we don't take any action, we don't vote on it, it just automatically becomes the contract after thirty days.
And it's only in a couple days.
Right, and so basically, it's either you do nothing or if we don't like it and we want to send it to arbitration, that's what we would have to vote on.
And what you're saying is we don't know what last, the, the previous year was?
What the expiring year is. Yeah, the, the current year, yes. I mean, I had asked at our communication subcommittee meeting, at our, the last meeting we had, which was, that's how this all came up, because I had not seen this, but I knew that the board had voted on it.
Yeah.
Um, and so they said that there was a synopsis done, giving us the percent of increase and the net effect of what the insurance increase and any other changes in the contract, but.
We didn't get it and neither did, I, when I asked these board members, they didn't, didn't seem to have it either in front of them.
So if we didn't get it, does that mean we can go beyond the thirty day?
No.
No.
It was, I was, what that was, was just a synopsis sheet.
Well, I mean.
It's a breakdown of the contract.
You, you have what salaries are, on the, at the back, on the, at the back of the document. There weren't a lot of changes in the, in the contract itself. It was a very quick negotiation, only.
So Maria, on the back here, it's Shawna, um, you know, vacation, the holidays, um, was it page eleven, I think?
That, that's the, that didn't change.
That did, none of that changed?
The, their vacation was twenty-five days, they have a five, five day carryover, um, their personal days is the same, holidays did not increase.
Rose, what's the, um, prorated? Like, how do they do, how do they do?
Which page are you on?
On, on eleven, uh, B, eleven B, on the vacation, it says, um, you know, the twenty-five, and then part-time administrators shall receive a prorated vacation benefit.
And so there's, there's some administrators that are probably not full year.
Well, if, if this document comes out and we have thirty days to act on it and we get it three days before the end of the thirty days, how, how did that happen?
Um, well, I, I had asked in the communications subcommittee and they said, I said, did you sign the contract yet? And the board chair said she had signed it on January seventh. Um, and I said, well, we haven't seen it yet at the council level, and Mike had not seen it either. And this was January twenty-second, I think, was our meeting with, with them. Um, so they checked into it and, and we got the notice that it was filed with the town clerk on January eighth, because that's what stamped on the copy that was at our desk at the time. Um, and in the past years, whenever the contracts came down, one went to the town clerk and one went to the town manager's office. This time, when it came down, they only filed one with the town clerk. She just assumed that the town manager had his copy, because that's the way it always, always had been done in the past. And then based on our inquiry at the subcommittee meeting is why we got it. And that, and we did have that, this was actually sent out to us, like, two weeks ago. Um, this was sent, put into the drop box and Gina had sent us an email saying that it was in there so that we had a chance to review it prior to tonight's meeting. And if we had any questions, um, we could ask on it, because we knew that the timeframe was short, was going to be very close to the thirty days. So it was just a change in procedure as to how the Board of Ed delivered it to the town hall.
So I, I got a question. If you look at the back page with their salaries, so Anthony, while I'm talking, so if you're making a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars this year. And in three years, you're making a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two seventy-six, what's the increase on the raise? But why does the high school principal get a fourteen thousand dollar raise and the intermediate school principal gets a three thousand dollar raise? A fourth, uh, four thousand dollar raise, one fifty-nine, nine to one sixty-three, four.
Where do you see fourteen now?
No, it's one sixty.
Oh, I did, okay.
It's four.
I was looking at that one, I was looking at twelve.
It's a percentage, right.
So they're all getting four. So when does this, this salary start?
July first of two thousand and nineteen.
Right, so I guess my, all's I was making the point was, is that we have this to review, what happens if, what happens if all those numbers is a typo or not? We can't look at the current year and say, yeah, that looks right, yep. You know what I mean? It's, to me, it's incomplete, because we, I have nothing to measure that against.
But unfortunately, that wouldn't be in this package, that, that should have been a separate handout.
Right, that, that's, that's my point.
Yeah.
It's incomplete, but, I'm, it's probably okay, but I have no idea.
Because we don't have the previous contract in front of us.
Bramford's looking better all the time.
How long is this contract, or three?
It's a three year.
Three.
We've been there before, though, guys, we can't, there's nothing we can do. We'll waste money if we.
But we should look at.
Because we could look at it, we could get the average of the surrounding towns that have a lot better test scores than us, and they all get paid ten to fifteen thousand less. But it's, but it's just a matter of being complete with the detail, the next time we get this, there should be another, we should have this documented company that at least showing the last year of the contract, just so that we, we understand what we're looking at. That's all.
Well, we have to send a letter to the superintendent, so I'll ask him for that.
But it's okay, it would be too late.
No, but I'm just, but, no, the next, the next, in four years or whatever.
In three years, when you're still sitting up there, Marie, just remember. The next item is review of House Bill fifty-seven sixty-five and the draft resolution for tax deferment program.
Right, this is the issue that came, uh, before the council at the last meeting with respect to the federal government shutdown. And, uh, there is a House Bill five seven six five that allows municipalities the opportunity to create a, a provision by which an action of the council or legislative body would permit a tax deferral, uh, situation for those impacted. Uh, and town council has put together, uh, a resolution rather than an ordinance, uh, to streamline, uh, the, the timing of this. And so he, he has prepared that and it's in there for your consideration. Um, it just, anecdotally, uh, I'm only aware of two families, uh, in, in this community affected by that.
How many?
Two.
Two? Of course, right now, we don't know what's going to happen.
Uh, right, it could, it, it's back open, could close on the fifteenth, I don't know.
Right, but the, the bill, uh, that allows for the resolution would only be applicable to the shutdown that started in December. Uh, and that's now concluded, so you can adopt a resolution to the extent that any affected families have not been able to pay their taxes, so that there's a relief on the interest. Because under the bill, uh, it would, the, the due date of the tax would be sixty days after the reopening of the federal government. So to the extent that the employees don't, did not receive their income until some moment after February first, under the existing law, they would be charged the interest if they did not pay by February first. So by adopt, if you wanted to adopt a resolution, it would afford relief to any affected employees. And they would functionally have sixty days from whatever that, the date when the government reopened to pay their taxes without penalty. Should there be another shutdown at a future moment, there's currently no legislation to address that, we'd have to wait to see what comes out of Hartford at that time. So it's your option at this point, you do, there's no obligation to adopt it, uh, but if you're going to adopt it, it would, uh, grant relief to any affected employees. And their taxes would, could be paid without penalty within sixty days of the date that the government reopened.
So this wouldn't, like, say there was another shutdown and somebody couldn't pay their, um, second half of their sewer assessment, that would, this would have to be something else, it would be different.
Right, thi- this bill that was put out by, uh, the legislature is specific.
To that.
To the shutdown of December, I think it was December twenty-third of nineteen, uh, nineteen, two thousand, two thousand and eighteen.
Right, so it's, it's basically the second, the taxes that are due January first.
So it's possible that maybe one of, one of, or more of those families weren't able to pay it and received a fine, we don't know that, so.
Right, so there's two families, you said, in town?
Right.
That are affected by it? And, and all it does, all this does is that we don't charge them interest.
So I'm very happy to, uh, provide help to somebody that's in distress because of a condition that they have no, no control over. If it's only two families, isn't it more logical, just try to check and see if their taxes are paid? And if they are, this is completely legal.
Right.
And we don't adopt unnecessary legislation or resolutions or however you want to characterize it. If there is an unpaid liability, perhaps, is that, uh, what's her name, the, uh?
Louise of, Louise of, social services.
Speaks to them, and if there is a need, we adopt this at the next meeting. But I just don't want to set the precedent of adopting something in almost a knee-jerk fashion.
I agree with you, meet in two weeks, right?
Yeah.
But let's check if there's a need, it, it, their taxes are paid.
Right, and it, because it's so specific, that it, if there is another government shutdown in two, in next week, it doesn't make any difference, this won't, this doesn't apply to them. So.
I like the idea of checking on those two families then.
That's what I do.
So we'll just keep it on the agenda and in the meantime, check and if we have to adopt, because they didn't, they have outstanding taxes, then fine.
Sure.
Okay, next is draft budget workshop schedule for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
It's pretty much the same format we've followed, uh, the past few years, other than, you know, if the council, uh, wants to change the order, I think that's been done in the past, depending on schedules and, and what's happening. Uh, we have flipped a few of those departments around, but.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Could you, Mike, could you give us a paper copy of that and I'll pull it next time, so we have.
Oh, sure.
Or is it in there already?
I have, I have a.
Because it's just.
Paper, yeah.
To check it during that one.
You want, you want, when we get copies now or?
Well, I just think it would be helpful, I don't know, for me, it would be anyway.
Yeah, thanks.
So do we have to make a motion to accept this or?
Yeah, I think a motion would be in order to, to accept that.
I make a motion to accept the budget session schedule for the town council as presented.
One second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ian Jolone.
Yes.
Councilor Kendall Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leom.
Yes.
Councilor Zappiano.
Yes.
Next is review of RFP, um, specifications for RFPs number seven, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
No.
Fireworks for a potato and corn festival.
Yeah, this is their, this is their annual.
I've never talked.
Contract that they put out. And I think the only change was minimal that, that they had an issue with the height of, of restricting the, some of the rockets to making sure that they weren't low.
Right. I remember that.
Too low. Right. So that, I thought that was a, in consultation with the fire marshal and Lauren Committee. Smart move.
I make a motion to accept the RFP, the specifications for RFP number seven, two thousand eighteen, nineteen fireworks for the potato and corn festival.
Second. Discussion.
Just quick, all the insurance requirements are the same, like?
Yeah.
That we've always had, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty much boilerplate.
Yep.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fornin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is approval of bid number six, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, purchase of one off-road all-terrain vehicle, four-wheel drive for North Branford Fire Department.
Yeah, the, so this is ready and the commission, there's a letter from Chief Seward in there as well to recommending acceptance of this bid and approve this award for seventeen thousand, four fifty-four thirty-four to Connecticut Power and Sport.
I'd like to make a motion to accept bid number six, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, for an ATV, four-wheel drive for the North Branford Fire Department, to award it to Connecticut Power and Sport in Wallingford for the total of seventeen thousand, four fifty-four thirty-four.
Second. Discussion.
Is there a, what, is there like a warranty and all that good happy stuff with the purchase of this, or I'm sure?
I don't, I don't think there's any warranty on off-road vehicles.
No.
There's no three years, thirty thousand.
Before we, before we vote on this, am I reading it right? At the special meeting in North Branford, was that when the, oh, the acquisition as a result of this discussion? So they didn't vote on the twenty-ninth and we sent it out to bid and got it back already? They, they voted on the twenty-ninth to accept this bid? Is that what the memorandum says?
Yes. That's, that's the way, that's the way I read it, too. And where is this gonna be housed? Do you know? At which fire department?
I don't know. I believe companies, right?
Okay. But it's for use at any of the fire departments if they need it?
Is that trailer, Anthony, or?
Right. And I think they're, they were thinking about it was more Woods area, Al company trees area where it would be more likely to be used for rescuing or rescuing or stuff like that.
Okay.
But I mean, it could move anywhere. It has to go.
And as far as use, like, is there certain people that are going to operate it, be trained, I'm sure, you know?
Yeah, I think they're gonna have like a little private training course on it.
So is that like a documented training you'll develop and then have it filed?
Yeah.
And then they provide the hourly rates for maintenance and whatnot to maintain it?
Actually, they were only, like, they were close, but you know, we, especially before they had to be a, you know, authorized service center.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
And Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fornin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is approval of tax refunds.
Rule to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Discussion.
Yeah, what's CFC?
A certificate of change.
So in the case of these motor vehicles, they may have sold them throughout the year. So they're entitled to a piece of the tax type.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fornin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next item is appropriation from the police extra duty fund.
It's actually a two-step process. There's funds that have accumulated in the extra duty fund. And that fund theoretically should be a wash, should be a zero. The money that we get in from the contractors equates to what we pay the employees plus the corresponding costs. And looking back and, and researching it, what happened was several years ago, for those that may remember the term MyRMA. The general, the general fund ate the entire MyRMA expense and obligation. It wasn't segregated out to the various funds that had payroll, one of which was police extra duty fund. So they've accumulated this money. There's been identified some items to enhance the communications. It will allow for remote access from our radio vendor into the main dispatch console and up to the Ochinkowski piece of our radio system remotely to be able to more efficiently and expeditiously solve problems that occur in our system. The long-term goal is to create a town-wide network through fiber theoretically to both Reed's Gap Road, Commerce Drive, Evergreen Woods, all our sites, so that that could be all done off an iPad, basically. Problems when, when the system goes down, they can be diagnosed and researched. So this, this twelve thousand dollars is the initial step, phase one of theoretically a three-phase project to get the radio vendors to have access through the back door into our system to be able to resolve questions. So the, the motion basically is two parts. The first part is to transfer the twelve thousand dollars from the police extra duty fund to the current year CIP four sixty-seven fund. And then the second part is to actually authorize the expenditure of the twelve thousand dollars out of the current year CIP for these radio repairs.
So is the, is this fund continuing to grow?
No.
Okay.
No. The, the.
So eventually it's gonna be.
Yeah. There, there's gonna be some corrections made. And we've looked at some of the items that, it theoretically, the general ate all the MyRMA thing. If we can go back and segregate some of those costs back and reimburse the general fund, we'll try to make it whole. And again, it's, it's not designed to be a moneymaker. It's designed to, the officer does the extra duty job. We pay him. We then bill the contractor for his fee plus some overhead, but it's, it's supposed to be a wash. And the last year, I think it, it was a, a three hundred dollar difference. So this, this is, this money's been accumulating for many, many years. And again, the MyRMA thing goes back to the early two thousands for those that were on the council back then. And that's when, that's when it got, got large. But it was accounting. It should have been segregated to all the funds that had wages and it, the general fund ate the whole thing.
So this is twelve thousand dollars and it's the first piece.
Correct.
And.
The other piece is can't take place currently because the fiber doesn't exist to get to Reed's Gap Road or Evergreen Woods or Commerce Drive. The fiber only exists in, in this current, at the police station. That's why they're able to get in. It's a VPN to get through the network to be able to diagnose. So ideally, phase two and three, again, is putting this whole network together that you now have a communications network that's based. One of the biggest failures that the communication system has, it's on copper T-one lines. When they get wet, a lot of times, especially Reed's Gap Road, tower goes down, that whole northern section of town loses communications. It's a problem. Fiber is seen as, as the, you know, next step up and a little more reliable. There's a cost associated with it, like anything else. If you want to get better, it's gonna cost you more money. So we're researching different alternatives. We have a cost from the current fiber provider. We're looking at Frontier offers a fiber solution as well that our radio vendor is using in other parts of the state with much success, at a little lower cost than what FiberTech and the other, other fiber people that are out there are using. So this twelve thousand, again, gets the radio vendor in the back door to look at the main console and Ochinkowski piece of it, but not the entire radio communication system.
How close is fiber to Reed's Gap Road?
Uh, FiberTech fiber is there. I'm waiting for, I talked to the girl from Frontier last Friday and she was gonna check her, her systems engineer to see if it was at Reed's Gap Road and Commerce Drive and Evergreen Woods. She thought it was, it's called an EVPL is their, their product that they use for fiber. So we're waiting to see back from them and then we're gonna get some cost factors and then see if it's worth putting in this year's budget coming up or sit on it for a year. We'll see how the numbers play out.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council approves an appropriation transferring twelve thousand dollars from the Police Extra Duty Fund two 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 to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen Capital Improvements Fund four six seven for the purposes of funding upgrades to the town's emergency communication equipment. Furthermore, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council authorizes an expenditure not to exceed twelve thousand dollars from the two thousand eighteen, nineteen Capital Improvement Fund for the VPN access identified methodology detailed in the attached email.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fornin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is citizen's statements and petitions.
The Potter Northford, um, again, tonight, there was sensitive subjects discussed. One was the fireman's pension. I think you really gotta be careful in way what you're getting, who you're getting it from. Do you wanna keep getting it from those people or are they just gonna get so disgusted that you lose their expertise, their command knowledge? Now, if you don't keep who you have, what do you do? You get all green. And, and they can't be considered firemen until they go through fire training school, which you have to pay for. It'd be like you, Al, you hiring me as a carpenter to work on your million-dollar house in Madison. I might fit the job title, but you're sure not gonna be happy with the product. So I think you can have a title, but what's filling that title is critical. And this town's worked very hard to maintain what they've got. And like I said, you all know, family time is so hard to get because to stay in this state and stay in this town, you almost have to, both, both parents have to be working. Family time, it's not quantity. It has to be quality because the quantity isn't there with so many people being so many, pulled so many different ways. Fire department's like a part-time job, but unfortunately, they can't choose the sunny seventy-degree weather or the middle of the, you know, they can't choose when they work. You people who dial nine-one-one determine that. So again, cooler heads need to prevail. Maybe, you know, you really gotta get a room full of the people doing it. Because if you push, the pushback you get, they might be getting pushed back from their families saying, why are you still doing this? You're never home. So you have to understand their commitment to the town might be coming with some back pressure. And if you push too much back, you might lose that expertise. We can't afford a paid department in this town. You know that. And if you do, we can't afford to live here in this town. So you might as well close the doors on both ends, said, close, can't afford it, paid fire department. So I'll let that go with that. The other thing is, be careful how you treat this help for these people that need it. I know the family, one of the families, I think personally, you don't know the stress that family's under. That coast guardsman is the head of the family. He's almost a broken man because he's got slapped in the face for doing one hell of a job. He has to come home, wife, two young kids. It was Christmas. It was the furnace not shutting off the coldest time of year. It was no money coming in. It was probably a living hell under that house. And a very proud man. And so don't close the door too quick because we don't know what is their breaking point. You know, they might have been fine on a fixed budget if everything stayed the same, it went, it was going. But don't forget the things it hit. Just a cold snap hit. Just Christmas. How do you tell the kids, well, we can't have Christmas? You can't do that. So you don't know if they took out a loan to buy Christmas gifts. You just don't know. So even though you're saying it's only two families, God bless them, it's only two families, but let's not forget those two families. So keep the door open, keep your mind open. And if we have to help them somehow, we don't wanna lose them as residents of this town. I mean, it might come to that. They might take a reassignment if they can't get out of a hole they've been dug into. And it's not their fault. That's the most disgusting part. It's not their fault. They didn't screw up at their job. They did a fantastic job. It's just because the coast guard never had any money. It came under the, the same thing TSA comes under, the same bucket of money. And so they lost funding. They're not under the Department of Defense like the rest of the military. So that's why they're hurting so bad. So again, keep those two things on the, open, please, because we're, we're talking dollars and cents, but we're talking people and services in this town. And, and everything's important, but there's gotta be a balance. So I think cooler heads are gonna prevail. Some systems are gonna be looked at and just open it up and talk to the people. But again, be careful what you ask for because you might get it and it might not be pretty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Second.